Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is a joint meeting. The Akushnet Select Board and the Soil Conservation Board. It is Tuesday, September 14th, 2021 at 4:00. All rise for the pledge of allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Very good. Mr. Chairman, do I have a motion to alter the meeting?
So moved.
And I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, first on the agenda tonight, minutes need to be approved by the Board of Selectmen. These came in a little later, and they're quite detailed. I would ask that we table this until next meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting mail. Meeting mail. First on the agenda is a letter of interest for the Cultural Council, Community Preservation Committee, and Historical Committee submitted by Courtney White of 101 Hope Street here in Akushnet, Mass. She checked off that she volunteered for Howard's, and she's a 12-year registered nurse. So do I have a motion to accept and to appoint Courtney White to the Cultural Council, Community Preservation Committee, and Historical Committee?
So moved.
And I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Next on the meeting mail, we have a letter concerning the Charles River Wheelman Cranberry Century Ride. It's an event that will be, it's a bike ride event that will be held on October 3rd, 2021, Rain or Shine. This is the fourth year that we're running the Cranberry Harvest Century, an event that captures some of the most charming roads in New England. This ride starts in Middleborough and travels through the cranberry bogs of Rochester, Wareham, Carver, and Akushnet. I notice, once again, it's October 3rd, 2021, start time of 7:00 a.m., and expected attendance limited to 850 riders. I see that we have Police Chief Chris Richmond's signature and Fire Chief Kevin Gallagher signing off on this event. So do I have a motion to accept this form and hold this event throughout town?
So moved.
And I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
And if anyone's interested, the contact person is Kevin Marion, spelt like the town, and he can be reached at 7, I mean, excuse me, at 978-467-5133, or kgmarion@gmail.com. That's kgmarion@gmail.com. Excellent. Okay, third we have is a letter from the EMA. Let me see here. Regarding parking in the 14 Thomas Street parking lot. It seems that we have some residents who are parking on town property. The letter reads here, it is from Jerry Bergeron, the director of the EMA. Dear Board of Selectmen, as you are aware, the EMA parking lot was originally for staff and volunteers. The town took a portion of the lot for public parking when pups, cases needed overflow so patrons did not have to park on South Main Street. Since the pandemic, EMA has become extremely active and has welcomed several new members. There have been times when our volunteers have had no room to park in the lot because of other vehicles left there, sometimes for weeks at a time. I am writing to request permission to make the lot at the EMA building available only to members, volunteers, and not the general public by posting signs appropriately. Do we need to have a motion on this?
So moved.
And I will second. All in favor of posting signs restricting parking at the EMA parking lot?
I'm a yes.
And I'm a yes also. Move on to under appointments. First order of business under appointments is the Soil Board reorganization. For those of you not familiar, back on May 10th at the town meeting, the townspeople voted in favor of amending the town bylaws to establish a Soil Conservation Board in the town of Akushnet. Previous organization of the board was from various department heads, I believe. And one of the many things of this soil bylaw, one of the changes, I should say, is that now the Board of Selectmen have become the Board of the Soil Board Committee. They have the powers and duties transferred to the Board of Selectmen. So we just have a little bit of business to deal with this concerning reorganization. Quorum of two members is allowed, so we have two members here tonight. First organization move we have to make is to elect a chairman and vice chairman. And my line of thinking is that it runs parallel with the Board of Selectmen. This way, we prevent any violation of open meeting laws, and we just have one person talking and going from there. So do I have a motion to?
Chairman, make a motion to name you as chair of the Soil Board. Soil Board for the, your term.
Okay. Very good. I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'll make a motion to elect you as the vice chairman to serve in the absence of the chairman.
I'll second that.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, in our reorganization, the board will appoint a secretary, and I make a motion that we nominate Lisa Leonard as the secretary of the Soil Board.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And lastly, the board may appoint an enforcement officer, so I make a motion to appoint Pat Hanen as a Soil Board Enforcement Officer concerning the, this board. Do I have a motion to appoint?
I'll second that.
So moved.
All in, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that gets us through our reorganization of the Soil Board. Next, under appointments, we have Soil Board Enforcement Officer, Pat Hanen, to explain some of the changes that accompany this reorganization and the Soil Board change.
I know you have the bylaw, but I highlighted the changes. Would you like a copy of the highlights?
Please.
If you could follow.
Please.
I'm sorry, I didn't make my.
Ah, that's all right.
Yeah, actually, I did.
Very good. Thanks.
Good evening. So as you know, the soil bylaws that the town had goes back to 1989, and things have changed a lot since 1989. And the existing bylaw was pretty vague in some different areas. So we suggested changes for the Springtown meeting. They were adopted, they've been approved by the Attorney General's Office. And some of the finer points of this were changes in the definitions to make them more applicable to what was going on in current day situations. So we have a better definition of what earth includes so that there's no discrepancies there. And that includes soil, lawn, sand, gravel, clay, rock, bedrock, and other allied products. On B, it talks about the enforcement officer as the inspector. Going down to D, it talks about the other definitions and following terms. We added a bulk material definition here to include basically everything that a gravel pit would either handle or produce, so that no one can say this isn't earth, or that's not sand, or that's not gravel. This is all encompassing of those materials. Secondly, we have another definition for disturbed surface area. The Board of Health recently passed a air pollution regulation that's at DEP for approval. And it works on disturbed surface areas and other things. So we made all of these definitions match that bylaw, so there's no conflict or no ambiguity between that. And the disturbed surface area will become important when you start to give your conditions on your Soil Board permit.
Okay.
We spelled out what dust suppressants were. There'd be no more question about that. We spelled out earth moving activities. The old bylaw allowed gravel pits to remove soil from the ground without a permit. It wasn't considered earth removal until it left the property. So that's been clarified here. The earth removal is using any equipment for any activity where soil is being moved or uncovered, and includes but not limited to grading, earth cutting, filling operations, loading, unloading of dirt, bulk materials, and adding to or removing from open storage piles of bulk materials, quarry operations, and then weed abatement and disking and soil mulching. The air pollution regulation deals with agriculture as well, so that's why soil mulching and stuff is in the definition.
Okay.
Dust control supervisor. I recently took a dust control course from a district out in California where they have certified dust control managers. And I thought it would be a good idea that we could be able to require dust control managers for these quarry operations and gravel pits in town. It's a certification open to anybody who takes the course, and you get a certificate. The next thing was high wind conditions. There are permits in a lot of these operations where the wind reaches a certain velocity and you stop operating to eliminate dust beyond the property line and things like that. So we've spelled that out in here.
Was there a, was there a high wind condition in our previous bylaw?
No.
Okay.
Nope. Then we describe what a large operation is. The feeling was that a small, little gravel pit that removes 5,000 yards of gravel a year versus a gravel pit that removes 50,000 or 500,000 needed to be differentiated when it came to closing costs and bonding. So that's spelled out very well, and that meshes with the air pollution as well. We described Phil. In the event that PJ Keating or Pico Stone or any other gravel pit in town decides to import soil, the town would want to have some say in that and be able to put conditions on that.
Okay.
At the same time, the Board of Health is reviewing a soil importation regulation that would require a permit from the Board of Health to import soil to any gravel pit in town. So that puts some control on what goes on with the quarry later on down the road.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman? Just offer comment first. You know, my, in my year back on, well, we've just prefaced it by saying, in my previous stint on the board, PJ Keating was a source of frustration because I felt like we didn't, we never really had the enforcement tools in place to make sure that we were, you know, monitoring quality of life issues for those neighbors there. And I want to make it clear that I fully respect that PJ Keating is an employer of good jobs for people in the area. It's not my intention at all to close PJ Keating down, but I also want to make sure that they're good neighbors and the residents who live in that area experience a good quality of life. And so, since my getting elected last year, this past year has been a real source of frustration for me personally because I felt like we've been shadow boxing with PJ Keating. And now with this, this bylaw, I feel that we finally have some tools in place to, one, allow them to maintain their operation, but also hold them accountable in a way that everybody knows what the ground rules are, right? There shouldn't be any guesswork whatsoever. The things that I'm most excited about, and again, I'm not a wind expert, I'm not a soil expert, but I am really excited about the ability to implement a fee structure and an hours of operation structure that addresses the neighborhood.
Yes.
But also the ability to levy fines.
Yes.
And while, you know, on the surface, you might look at a $200 or $300 a day fine is not a lot of money, but if we, if we were enforcing this when this saga started with PJ Keating, looking at a good chunk of change here, right? And so I think this should be the con, what is, the past is the past, right?
Yes.
This should be the construct of how we handle PJ Keating moving forward with this document here. I would ask that this board send this out to every person in town who has a soil permit so they know what the rules are as we approach 2022 and we start to issue permits. This will be what I'll be working from moving forward. Again, the past is the past.
Yep.
And I hope that we can all coexist moving forward. So I know you put a lot of time into this, Pat, to help us develop this instrument, and so I want to thank you for that publicly. And Mr. Chairman, I want to thank your support for this. And then I'm hoping we can, as a Soil Board, talk about the hours of operation, what a fee structure will look like, and do we have, do we have, do we have the ability to execute a violation? Do we have, how would that take place? Would that be in the form of a, writing a ticket? Will it be, you know, just walk me through that.
So first, in my whole one-year tenure here with the town, I was instructed from the beginning to be very careful not to do anything here that would put PJ Keating out of business. That's been a very strong message to me through this whole thing. Keating is not the only, only pit in town. Pico Stone is another pit. They're also closed. They had permit violations and couldn't live up to their permit. They have not come back and reapplied for a permit because they don't really want to meet the conditions. So this is a general bylaw for, for everybody. So right now, both of our formerly licensed pits aren't licensed, and we'll need to commit compliance with this. As far as the violations go, they do go up to $300 a day, and each day of a violation that the violation continues is a new violation and a new $300. So if Keating violates the operating hours 30 days in a month, that's $9,000 for Keating. And even for a company that size, it starts to hit the balance sheet and people start to take notice. For our other gravel pits, it may bring them into compliance a little faster because they don't want to spend the money. But it has been a cat and mouse game here because the old bylaw was so big. The other big change here is that the bylaw no longer says that gravel pits in existence prior to this bylaw can remain, stay in business or not. They were grandfathered. We've eliminated that. Now you have to have a permit if you're going to be in the earth removal business. You can't be grandfathered, that's over. And in PJ Keating's case, by October 11th or 12th, they will have had to apply for a permit. They're currently operating without a permit. They've refused to get a permit, but I think Town Council can talk to you about that later on. The quarry for the purpose of this bylaw is the, is the primary use of that property. And the asphalt plant and other operations are a secondary or accessory use to the quarry. And you have the ability in here through the definitions of open storage piles and bulk materials to limit the hours of operation of the asphalt plant through the, through the gravel bylaw. Because they won't be able to remove any material from stockpiles and load their bins for the asphalt plant. That's considered earth removal, and that's something that you didn't have the ability to do before. There's been some questions about the water table and that gravel pits can't come within four feet of the, of the water table. Obviously, the quarry is down hundreds of feet and has gone beyond the water table. But going forward, as the quarry expands into new areas that haven't been mined, the town has the ability to enforce their bylaw and not allow them to go within four feet of the water table.
Just, Mr. Chairman, just a technical comment.
Yes.
Questions.
The one.
Technically, we're in a Soil Board meeting, is that?
That is correct.
That's how we're doing this, right?
That is correct.
If I were to ask for a motion to instruct the town administrator, Mr. Blake, Mr. Hanen, to come up with a 2022 permit licensing fee structure to address, so we're ready to roll in 2022, right? And we treat?
By October 11th.
Right. We treat our, our pits like we do our on and off premise licenses at the beginning of the year. We send out a letter and say, is it, is your intention, is it your intention to, you know, renew your permit and file for a permit?
Yep.
And that's, I think we need to take that type of approach, right? So everybody knows what the rules are.
And also in here, now spells out the time period they have to reapply. They can't wait until the week before to apply for a permit.
Right. Let's come up to something so everybody knows where, what the game plan is and, you know. They have a proper prior notice, and we, you know, we're not doing this the last week of December.
Right. Well, I think we're going into executive session at the end of this meeting to discuss certain things, so.
We, we did put a clause in here that they have to demonstrate that they won't have a material adverse effect on the health or safety of persons living in the neighborhood or on the use of their amenities and their adjacent land, their swimming pools, their decks, their patios. That's been a big problem for the people that live around the quarry. The security has been increased to $10,000 an acre. The town does not have anywhere near what it needs for security at that site as far as a bond. They've never presented a plan of what their, what their grades were and what their anticipated grades would be as they remove soil. That's now required. They have to actually provide now a closure plan, a final closure plan with all of the costs to do that. And they would have to put in a financial assurance for the cost to do that.
That's for everybody, right?
That's for everybody. These are for everybody. This is not just for.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Right.
Yep. And everybody is, is two people. It gets into the basins and swales and other erosion controls that tie into conservation issues. They have to explain their method of removal. They can blast, they can remove it hydraulically, but they, they need to explain that to the town. Hours of operation. You now have control of the hours of operation under this Soil Board permit. And route of travel and number of trips. You have the right to limit the number of truck trips per day that go up and down South Main.
So let me ask you this, though. This might be a, sorry, Mr. Chairman.
No, please.
South Main Street is a state highway, so we have zero control, right? We have zero control.
We have limited.
Limited control over what takes place over there. However, if the town had ownership of that road, we would have more.
Correct.
More control.
But on, but on town roads, you will have that control.
Right.
So Keating, say, let's use Pico Stone just for an example. They're on Middle Road, they're in a residential area. If they want to have 100 trucks a day come into their pit, that would be excessive. And you could say, no, we only want 25, or we only want 50.
Right.
You would have the right to do that. So same thing.
Understood. But like, so South Main Street, if they were coming in from Fairhaven and exiting through Fairhaven.
No issue.
For us. I'm saying we wouldn't have as much control over that.
Not.
Because, but if we owned South Main Street, we would have more control over both entrance points.
Yes.
Right? Okay. But I think that's something that we need to continue to keep front and center as we manage this issue.
And the, the, the big message in the bylaw is the earth removal in the town of Akushnet is considered to be contrary to the best interest of the town. Now the bylaw says that whoever applies for a permit needs to demonstrate that their operation will not be contrary to the best interest of the inhabitants of the town.
Right. Mr. Hanen, I also see that with section three of paragraph seven, or A7, we're limiting the transfer to 80,000 pounds per truck.
On town roads.
On town roads.
So the federal weight limit for trucks is 80,000 pounds. Mass Highway will sell you an overweight permit that you can load your truck to 103,000 pounds to run on Mass Highway roads. Listening to what goes on with Chapter 90 money and the lack of being able to pave roads in town, no one gave the town money to damage their roads on 103,000 pound trucks over their roads. So this bylaw limits any gravel pit in town to not load over 80,000 pounds, period. And you can verify that through scale reports, and that can be a condition when you do the permit is to require weekly, daily, whatever, scale reports. They have been giving us monthly scale reports.
I think we need to post this on our webpage as well.
I believe it is posted.
On our Facebook page. I think this is a significant, this is a significant change for the town.
This is what the town needed.
Yeah.
And then there's a requirement for how they stabilize slopes and how they close things out in the end. They can't just shoot some hydro seat at, at Pico or Keating, and that's about it. It really puts some teeth into the, into the Soil Board, and it will absolutely benefit the neighborhood.
So just to reiterate, they, they need to, I see here, it says all soil removal activities that exist as of effective date of this regulation must apply for a permit within 60 days of such effective date. So this was that October date you were mentioning? October 8th or 9th?
Yeah.
October 8th. So back on August 8th, the Attorney General approved these bylaw changes.
And then the town clerk posted it.
Okay.
And if, it's 60 days from the date that the town clerk posted it.
All right.
I had inadvertently sent them, him and Pico, a notice to apply for a permit. So at least they got an extra 45 days' notice to apply for the permit.
You want to get it right.
They got another letter today from the Soil Board asking them to apply for their permit and get the process going.
Very good.
That's it.
Very good. Okay. Thank you for this information, Mr. Hanen.
My pleasure.
It's been informative. Any more questions?
No, that's it. I think this is good stuff. Like I said, Mr. Chairman, do you have a motion on the table to ask Julie, Jeff, and Pat to work on what a permit and license, you know, a fee structure would look like? Is that something we do in executive? You guys can do that offline and then bring it back to the.
Yeah. One thing, one thing in the fee structure, we now get to charge for inspections for violations, regular inspections, bad weather inspections.
Okay, very good. I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you. Very good. Thank you, Pat.
Can I ask a question? Question? Pat?
Yes, please. Your name, please.
My name is Kevin Smith. I'm from 161 Lawson Avenue.
Good afternoon, Kevin.
Good. My question is, I didn't hear, maybe it's already been discussed, are there fines in that? Enforceable fines?
Yes.
Kevin, if you want the.
Yeah, I'd like to get a copy of that, please.
I'll give you my copy.
That's okay.
Thank you.
I mean, I, as it is, I mean, basically, they've been thumbing their nose at all of us. This has been going on for two years, and I kind of suspected when this all started it was going to be a drawn up. And there's no fines that I know of to this day, and that's what I said when we started all this. You have to put some type of fines in place here to make them take notice. I mean, they're running the conveyor system last night in the asphalt, in the asphalt plant. Because I went over and I, I sat there and I listened. Cease and desist. If I, if you put a cease and desist on me and I did what they're doing, I'd be locked up. When does it stop? I mean, I'm all for people's jobs and all this, but at this point, they don't care. They don't care about us in the surrounding neighborhoods. There's four or five people on my street alone that have cancer or some type of breathing problems. We still haven't, even the town, I know they're spending a lot of money with this, they chasing them. Where is our air quality study as an independent so that we know what is that air that they're sending out of that quarry doing to the people in the neighborhoods?
Well, we are, we are addressing the concerns of the citizens.
I understand.
And you.
It's one step at a time. It's frustrating. I mean, with COVID and everything else, it's been over two years.
Okay. May I have a follow-up?
Sure.
Okay. We've come to an agreement with this, called a September stipulation with the quarry, which I don't know how familiar you are with September and December, where we, we asked and agreed to different stipulations that we would work toward to make the area better, that sort of thing. As you may or may not know, we were in court last week, still dealing with this situation. So the town is addressing concerns of the citizens. I wouldn't want the neighborhood to feel like, hey, they're opening the asphalt plant, you know, you guys. you know, you guys did nothing or have that kind of attitude. There is work being done. You know, it's not...
Well, I know it takes time. I mean, you've got 22 documented violations with pitches and everything. For that, you know...
That is correct.
This is tough. You know, I mean, we've had really kind of no information because of COVID. I don't know if you can put any of this up, how much, obviously because of the court case, you're limited as to what can be put out to the public. But is there anything that, you know, like to update the people in the neighborhoods so that they kind of know where it stands and not all of a sudden they're going to, you know, stop running and we're all surprised?
Well, we can't be premature either, right?
No, right. No, no. No, but just like, I haven't talked to anybody here and some of that's been on me, but what, you know, where do some of the things stand, like the cease and desist? Does that allow them to do engineering and do this and do that? Or are they supposed to just stop all operations? And that's the questions that a lot of neighbors have.
Well, they have stopped all operations. I haven't seen the blasting since October.
Well, they haven't stopped blasting, but they've still been driving the trucks in and out of there, unloading stone.
Correct. So these are the nuances that we're trying to solve. Is that a good...
I mean, in the block.
But they are not operating and mining right now. They haven't blasted since October. Okay, so that should, you know...
Well, the worst problem is the stone piles. That's where a lot of the biggest issues aside from that asphalt plant. Because they don't water them. They have a sprinkler going in the front of the building. They have sprinklers along the roadway. I mean, when I went on a tour in there, you'll see the dust blowing off the pile. They need some type of a sprinkle system that's directed at the piles. And that was one of the biggest concerns that we had outside of the asphalt plant.
Correct. The dust mitigation is of highest concern. The other concern is water discharge into the Akusha River. You know, the... Pat was... Turbidity in the water, you know, the amount of...
Suspended solids.
The suspended solids is another very big concern.
Well, that you can see, I mean, I've seen that years ago. You know, I've lived in town 38 years. And I've lived behind there. And when they used to have the silpons that were in back there, you'd see all the solids floating. And they would let us sit and then they drain it and they dig it out and get rid of it. And then they'd fill it again and, you know, the process would repeat itself. So I mean, now you're just sending it on to the river.
Well, they're making, there have been modifications made essentially.
Well, that's all I'm here to ask is find out what, where things stand and what's going on. Because like I said, I heard it last night. It's like, wait a minute, this is not supposed to be happening. I mean, eventually, yeah, I fully expect them to open. I don't want to not see them open from the standpoint of everybody that works there. Just be a good neighbor. That's all we keep saying. That's like a broken record. Just be a good neighbor. That's all we ask.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Hannan? Please, please.
It's an important... To his comment about the air monitoring, Representative Hendricks found a grant for us for some air monitoring devices for respirable dust. So I applied for the grant for eight air monitors that will go into the neighborhood. And that should be happening in October. I talked to Conoco today about getting some air monitoring going while the quarry is not operating so that we can get a background study of what's the dust level when the quarry is not operating.
Correct. Establish a baseline.
Yes. So that when the quarry does get back online, that we have something to go from for what their increase was. But we are being proactive on the air monitoring. We are expecting eight monitors.
Correct. And to Mr. Smith's point of the dust, of the rock piles, they're gone now, right? I mean, it just stands now. This was my point I made, that they haven't been in operation. They've removed almost all of their stone that was piled.
All that's left now is the crushed asphalt.
The crushed asphalt.
Yeah, they're wrapped. That's it. It's basically empty other than that.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Smith. All right. Next on the agenda, we have all business. Waste Management Contract Approval. Julie, can you give us an update on this, please?
Sure. So we had worked to get a contract with Waste Management approved in June. There's been a lot of back and forth. And now we're at a point where we have finally come to an agreement on the terms of the contract. The bid itself hasn't changed. As you know, we went out to bid for the waste services. And that information hasn't changed. It's just all the legalese kind of terminology within the contracts that we've been going back and forth. Our attorneys are happy with this final product that you guys have in front of you. And we have received MOAs with Waste Management to keep our services going. The current MOA expires at the end of this week. So if we can approve the contract, then we'll be under the new contract and we can end the MOAs.
Okay. Mr. Warner, do we have a motion to approve the the new Waste Management contract? And this covers for five years now, correct?
It does. Yep.
Very good. Well, I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. So you'll notify them and we'll sign something by Friday, correct?
We have. Yeah, at least it has. At least we'll sign it after this.
Everything in order? Very good. Thank you. Mr. Warner, I just ask, we have the next on new business, chapter 61A, right of first refusal for ground lease for commercial use. Do I have a motion to table this until next meeting? We still will be within allotted 30-day notification?
Yes.
Yep. So...
And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Then we have next on the new business, reserve fund transfers. First is Planning Department, the clerk. This is a part-time position of 19 hours, 19 and a half hours a week.
Yep, 19 and a half hours. So at our executive session last meeting, we talked about a proposal with the union where we would add a position to the Planning Department. The Planning Board had asked if they could have a clerk with more hours in that office. We worked to get a full-time planner where there never was a full-time planner there before, and he needs a lot of help. So in the executive, we looked at allowing that position to be in there. The union's agreeable to it. This would be, this reserve fund transfer now would cover the additional cost to make it 19 and a half hours for this year.
Up until calendar year or fiscal year?
For the fiscal year, yes.
For the fiscal year. Mr. Warner, do we have a motion to approve the $6,800 reserve fund transfer for the Planning Department?
So moved.
And I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next for reserve fund transfers, once again, the Planning Department, GIS software and training of $4,500.
Yep. So in our last meeting, you know, Mr. Warner had talked about increasing what they need for the Planning Department. And in talking to our new planner, Doug, you know, this is essentially what he needs to turn the office around. You know, we've been looking at investing in that office as a whole. Our current GIS software is old, outdated, is really difficult to use and to update. And this would be the cost for the software and training. It would be for multiple licenses. So, you know, where we have a store motto agent who's also using the GIS and needs it for MS4 permit, he would also have access to it and be able to take the training to use it as well. So that would be, what we're looking at here is the amount for the GIS and the training. I'm putting it as a reserve fund transfer, but I'll also put it through CARES. And if CARES covers it, then we'll let it sit there. But I wanted to at least have the reserve fund. So if CARES denies it, then we still have the money to go ahead and bid.
So this will be interdepartmental also, to a certain extent, like you said?
Yes. It would be for more than one department to utilize, yeah.
Very good. So do we have a motion for $4,500 for the GIS software and training?
So moved.
And I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make one comment on this stuff.
Yes, please.
I would argue that the Planning Department, at this point, is probably the most important department we have in town. And that's not to disparage anybody else, but we've got a lot of potential in town. But we also have a lot of what we might call threats to our quality of life, to our, you know, small-town feel. And this type of software and then these type of, this type of tools that we're asking for will allow us to assess the impact of proposed bylaws or what have you before we actually make a decision. You know, and I think this came out of a frustration that I've had with the Lake Street project where we've had to literally work off of pen to paper to come up with plans. And by having this type of software, we can game plan. If you have an idea, I have an idea, Mr. Gasper has an idea for something in town, we can kind of play around with it to see what the impact will be before we, you know...
Yes.
Before we go live. So thank you for your support. This is really good stuff.
Well, I think we're all in agreement, Mr. Warner. At the Planning Department, you know, we're building it. We didn't have one before June. So now we're in the process of moving forward in a certain direction. And we have the support of the Selectmen. And I think of the town doing this. Third, for reserve fund transfer is, again, the Planning Department, Adobe Creative Suite of $1,000, and that's a licensing fee.
It is. And it covers for the year. And again, to your point with Lake Street, this would tie in with the GIS software that would allow us to kind of manipulate the maps and show where we're putting certain things. It's just a really helpful tool, again, that will elevate the Planning Board as it's working through all these plans for the year.
Very good. Do I have a motion to transfer $1,000 for the Adobe Creative Suite licensing?
So moved.
I will second. All in favor? Aye. Very good. CARES request, iPad for Planning Department.
So I kept it in CARES because I know this is something that CARES will cover. And again, I'll work to get the other two items for Planning Board approved through CARES. But essentially, an iPad so that he can use all the software, take it on the go. We had approved iPads from CARES for Jim so that he could do the same thing during the pandemic. And so we would be looking to just purchase an iPad under CARES for him as well.
Very good. Motion to approve iPad for Planning Department, CARES request. Second. All in favor? Aye. Passes. Next, Department of Public Works Sewer Privilege Fee for 2 Labonte Street. Now, this is a... Someone has it before I get to it. This is for a tie-in on a newly built street, Labonte Street, for one house lot.
Yes.
And the amount... Was that 12,000, something around that?
Yep, $12,610.41.
Do I have a motion to approve the sewer privilege fee for 2 Labonte Street?
So moved.
And I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Town Administrator's report, anything?
I'm good.
Selectmen's announcements, Mr. Warner, anything?
Just want to acknowledge a couple of things. One, I want to say, Mr. Chairman, thank you for representing the board at the 9/11 memorial. I thought your speech was spot on and they did a fantastic job representing the board. Hats off to Chief Gallagher and the Fire and EMS and EMA for putting on just a class, class act presentation in service. In addition, on Sunday, I was able to represent the board at the AYSA soccer field dedication. And it was awesome to see, there must have been close to 700 people there, families, kids, with the new soccer fields. Hats off to the Board of Selectmen, the DPW. Steve Tibbles from the golf course. Not very many soccer fields in Massachusetts have a golf course superintendent growing in the grass there, right? And it's just been a great, great partnership. And, you know, look forward to the next couple of phases. That whole campus will be a crown jewel, just like Pope's Park is in town.
Very good. Very good. And I just have a little blurb. I'd like to say that September is Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. Prostate cancer is the second-leading cause of cancer death of men in the U.S. If you're over 50, are you? I urge you to call your doctor and get screened, a simple blood test. A PSA test can detect the beginning of prostate cancer. September also marks one year that I am prostate cancer-free. Early detection saved my life and it can save yours. So...
Congratulations.
And we can move on from there. So now we have information on current and prior DPW road policies.
Yep, information only. I wanted to just make sure you guys could see that. I know Selectmen-Gasper had asked about it before. And I'll be working with the DPW. I believe Selectmen-Gasper is also looking at these with the DPW to see if there are any changes that should be made. So you have that for your info.
Following boards, commissions have vacancies. We've had quite a few people express interest in the town committees. And what we still have left is the Agricultural Commission. They have three alternate vacancies. And I know the Agricultural Commission is going to have an event at the Grange, I believe, September 25th. You could check with them to make sure that's the exact date. But up on Main Street, a little bit before Country Whip. And they'll be having an event on the 25th. We also have the Beautification Committee. We have eight vacancies. Community Preservation Committee. One Housing Authority vacancy, one residential vacancy.
I think that one just got filled out.
That one just got filled up tonight. Very good. Cultural Council, 15 vacancies. One may be filled pending approval. So 14 vacancies. Historical Committee, we're all filled up on that. Open Space Committee has one vacancy, which kind of runs along with the Planning Board, correct?
Yes.
Working on that. And the Zoning of Appeals, Zoning Board of Appeals, has one alternate vacancy. So anyone interested, please submit a citizen's interest form with the Board of Selectmen's office and we'll go from there. Future business, we have Selectmen's meeting Tuesday, September 28th, 2021, at 4:00 p.m., which is two weeks from today. We will be entering executive session. Are we tabling?
Yeah, we've been tabled number two.
Number two. So should I read it and then ask for a table or is that the procedure? About attorney.
If you've got two reasons to go into executive session and you're not going in for one, I don't think you have to read and table it. You can just read for the one you're going in.
Okay. Very good. We're going to be entering executive session under General Law, Chapter 30A, subsection 21A.3, "To Conduct Strategy in Preparation for Negotiations with Union Personnel or to Conduct Contract Negotiations with Union Personnel." AFSMI Clerical Union, DPW, Police and Fire, EMS. "Also to Discuss Strategy with Respect to Litigation. If an Open Meeting Will Have a Detrimental Effect on the Bargaining or Litigation Position of the Public Body, as the Chair so declares and the Board will not return to Public Session. Review of Matters Presented, Votes May Be Taken." Also, we have executive session on the General Law, Chapter 30A, subsection 21A.3, "To Discuss Strategy with Respect to Litigation." PJ Keating, "If an Open Meeting May Have Detrimental Effect on the Litigating Position of the Public Body, and the Chair so declares and the Board will not return to Public Session. Review of Matters may be, and Votes May Be Taken." Roll call vote, Mr. Warner?
Yes.
And I am a yes. We will be entering executive session, not to return. Thank you very much.